Six hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars in federal grant monies under the American Rescue Plan Act. So this was something we had previously held a public hearing on, but we were informed we needed to accept all of the money instead of half of the money. So that's the purpose of this hearing.
Did you need to read into the record what we intend to use the APAP funds for? Do we can make it part of the minutes?
I was thinking we could make that, well, so what my intention was is that we would accept the money and then review the
Schedule.
The list that we had come up with.
Okay.
So with that, I'll open up the board discussion.
About accepting the funds?
Yeah.
Well, we should accept it because we're going to be paying for them whether we take it or not, so we might as well take the money and say thank you very much and put it to good use for the betterment of our community.
And by accepting it, we have still three years to expend it, correct?
We do, there are certain criteria, criteria, thank you, that we have to adhere to. It isn't just for whatever we want, there are certain things specifically for infrastructure that's more resilient to shutdowns, things that allow people to work from home more readily, clean water and septic infrastructure upgrades, things like that. So that criteria has been slow in coming to us, but I think we have a good enough handle on it now that we know what we can and cannot spend it on. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
To accept the funds?
Yes.
We don't need to go back into our regular schedule? Is this one of those things where we can, if it's a public hearing?
We're at a public hearing, so yeah, I think we should
Close the hearing?
Close, close a public hearing, okay. So seeing no public, we'll close the public hearing, and with that, I will entertain a motion on the discussion of the hearing.
I move that we accept six hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars in federal grant monies under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second. A motion and second, further discussion.
Should we just change the name to Santa Claus?
I guess if they're gonna give us three quarters of a million dollars, we'll call it what they want. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that our list of potential uses for the funds be attached in the minutes with that motion, so that people have an idea of what we're looking to rope the funds.
I, so let me
Yes, no?
Uh, let me go back on this, so this is, this is the list that Susan and I came up with, basically from our discussion at the last meeting and then the discussion from our department head meeting.
Okay.
We've prioritized some of these just basically on, on the board's intentions, and then towards the end of the list, there are things that basically do not fall into the category or are on the questionable end of things, whether they meet the criteria set forth in the ARPA guidelines. So what I would like to do is just kind of go down through them one by one, and then we can agree, basically the ones at the ends are ones that myself and Susan, just reviewing the guidelines and the criteria, did not feel that they fit, and, or we can start, I don't know, how do you want to do it?
It's fine, go one by one.
Go one by one, yeah.
So the first one is building ventilation for town hall police station, this is kind of self-explanatory, this is just to put UV lighting within our HVAC system so that it kills any viruses and bacteria circulating through there, protects our employees and customers.
That won't, that won't, I'm sorry.
What I was gonna say is Rich, that's simply an add-on feature to the, the air
I've already talked to three different companies that said they would have prices this week.
So that won't impact as we look forward to how we can revitalize the town hall, that won't happen?
No, because these are systems that can come out of a system, go into another system. It's essentially just a UV light
I've heard of them, yeah.
Along the way of the air to flow.
Yeah, okay.
It'll change a few ways that we do things, like the system will, the floor will run all the time in occupied areas, not necessarily like up here because it's empty all the time, but downstairs, police station. And if they're gonna price it per unit, so we can decide
How many units?
How many to do and where to do, because we may not want to do this area because it's so, like
The air quality of the area.
I feel the amount of air changes that are going on behind me, I think we should serve the air.
Well, depending on the cost, I would agree, because we, we spend time up here and the air quality and the dust in here is something else, so just saying, for those of us more sensitive to that kind of thing. But significantly, I, I say, I agree, I think it should be right there, number one in the list, it'll help everyone downstairs, which is good.
So what I'm gonna be doing is just putting the person who's leading these up and then the current action that we're taking, so I'm just putting this one as Rich and we're waiting quotes from that person. Digitizing town records, obviously last week we received our bids, or, well, we had the breakdown, we did kind of have a front runner in that, and Susan and Rich talked with them today.
We have kind of asked them a lot of questions, so basically I said, you know, we're new to this, what do we have for hidden calls mainly, things that your bid's not showing? They went through that and they're gonna send us another quote of what they project for add-ons, like which scanner we should get and that type of thing. I asked them to define a user, because that's the thing that, oh, they all seem to be different on the users, they said a user is basically anybody that can input information. So if it's open to the public, there's a cheap way to get where the public can access the files. There's also a way that, like inspectors could get into the files, but maybe not input, depending on how it's set up, so we don't necessarily have to have a user on everybody. I mean, like Robert is probably not gonna input, you know, so you don't have to pay a user fee on all of them, but if we set up the program where, you know, you can go out and add information to card, then that would be a user. They're gonna base it on ten users, which they said was pretty much the average for a town our size, and they're gonna work up a price, and they said the company they use gives pretty good discounts for towns that are under ten thousand people, because they consider them small users.
There'd be a separate user, I forget what, what he called it, but that would be for everyone else, it would be a read-only
Right.
Up to five hundred at a time or something, could, could access the information.
I actually called Wesboro, because I know the business manager there that used them, and he said they were a delight to work for, he had nothing bad to say at all. Susan and I are thinking we'll pick one of the other leading people and call them and do the same thing, just so we have a comparison. Can you think of anything else that, oh, they also want to talk to Block Five, and we're gonna try to set that up, because they want to make sure whatever they recommend to Block Five knows, so they can make sure everything works together.
If it gets synchronized, yeah.
But they said the system works wrong about anything, you know, the, there's four, depending on which scanner we get, is where we may need to upgrade, and they're recommending an average scanner, because they said if you get into something that does great pictures, you get into lots of memory, and then you pay for it in your monthly thing, and they have one that's an industry standard that they recommend.
We need good pictures, we don't need great pictures.
Right, and he said if you ever have a situation where you need something else, you could go someplace and use their scanner and send it in. It sounds like it's pretty easy to use, if we just scan something, put a label on it and send it to them.
It's getting us on our phones, it's gotta be pretty easy, yeah.
And one thing you wanted to ask Block Five is, because we have a choice between cloud-based or server-based for the records management system, that's a question for them as far as that's concerned.
And that's what they're working up the difference in prices on is which way we go, and, but we gave them some ideas of the towns' needs, so now they're gonna react with pricing on that.
Good, good.
Because I was a little leery of the hidden costs, but didn't sound like it's gonna be, you know, tremendous amount.
Another thing Rich and I discussed this morning is just, you know, the purchase of the scanners may or may not be something we need to do, and I think as we get into this process, what we're going to need to start doing is mandating that people utilize digital formats when they submit things.
I see Plan Bords have been doing it for years.
Right, but like people submitting applications for building permits or anything like that, you know, in the long run, and this is one of Rich's points, was it cuts down on such labor, having to retrieve files or file thing, it, it just, it streamlines things, so as we get into this process, it's something we want to remember, is that we want to, we want to get rid of any more paper inputs, we do this, it gets us digital, and then we'll move forward, everything is
Do they end up, because I agree, but the trouble with everything is it has to be categorized, so do they set up the categor, if that's part of their bid?
I think they all did that.
Okay.
Susan brought up a point that you just reminded me of, and she asked if our scanner copying machine downstairs would work, and I think it will, they're gonna verify that too, that we may be able to get by without a scanner for a while.
At least initially, but we had that under agreement, but we probably will want a dedicated one at some point. But we wanted to need as many copies either, so it's, the usage will change, it's really what it is.
Well, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think once we have all this done, we're not gonna be talking about maybe, you know, ten documents a day maybe to go in there, I mean, I'd probably get, I'm guessing I get ten a week to scan us, you know, between septic and well and that type of stuff. You know, so I don't think this is gonna be a big scanning issue once it's caught up. The other thing we have talked about is what we want to do with everything they scan. Most people are recommending shredding it and getting rid of it. So we have to decide, I mean, obviously, police records are gonna have to be kept, medical records have to be kept, probably some of the tax clerk stuff, but that's something we need to kind of keep in our mind, because we're gonna have to have that answer.
In which case we have a truck come in and load everything up and
Now, one other thing this company does is they scan a box of documents, and then they come in to us and they say, okay, here's your first book, let's go through it, we pull up files, we see how it works, we say, no, we hate this format, they change it. We say, no, this format's great, we can live with it, then they proceed. They said it takes about, I think they said a month to get the first process done, between all the setup, the valuation, checking it out, long-term contract, then they said they do the rest in lightning speed.
So can I ask, they, they're taking it off-site to scan it, correct? So is, do they have, rather than it come back to us to shred, just leave it?
No, they shred it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay.
They have a price, most of them have a price, and they're for shredding. The other thing is they have, I can't remember what he called it, but they have a quick response, like if we need U four twenty-five, we call them and say, we need U four twenty-five, they will scan it and email it to us, so we can look at it while it's missing.
Yeah.
Because one of my questions, how many files do you take at once, how many will leave here, so we want to make as few trips as possible.
So for that first block, I mean, they're not taking all the files?
No, they're gonna take a small group, first time, scan it, put it in the format they recommend, and separate it how they recommend, and then we're gonna do a little test with it and say, okay, I need a septic plant, I type it septic, it brings up what it brings up, and we evaluate whether we like how they've done it or not, or how we want to change it.
Or you need to get
You know, and that stuff, like the order of the files, all that type of stuff.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because they said what's happened before is they categorized, they set it up, and then the people hated, couldn't use it. So they want to make sure it's usable, we'll have to sign off on it being usable before they start scanning eight hundred thousand files, you know, so.
Sounds like we're on the right track.
I, I think so, I mean.
So let me back up, well, just for this one, and then we'll back up, I mean, I think by the time it's all said and done, the shredding and the add-ons, I think it would be for a budgetary number, a hundred and fifty thousand would be probably responsible for the number.
I think that is probably high, and I can answer that better after they give us this next quote, because that's gonna include a lot of that.
You talk about the first, for the first year for the, the scanning and then the, the setup of the records manager.
Yeah, I think all told, for everything, the turnkey and the first year operations
I, I think that's probably a fair number.
And then we want to know what it is per year, because there is going to be a licensing
Right, that's it.
But then we would have that part of our regular budget to do that, so.
So if I can
That's something we're definitely taking into, taking into account is what our future calls be, what
Correct.
Because some of them were bidding low to have very high monthly fees, it's kind of like the alarm company that gives you the system, so they get the monitoring.
Right, right.
And I think that's the other consideration, is that, you know, we want to go for, we might as well pay it upfront with this money, so that the, the budgetary impact is minimal moving forward.
Correct.
As far as the, the UV features, how many of those were you thinking, and if you were to throw a rough budgetary number at it?
One per system, so I'll tell you in a minute. Two lasers, one there, just one, two, three, four here, there's seven at the library.
Five at the library?
Seven.
They can wait.
Ooh, wow, dinner tonight!
Fourteen, probably twenty thousand dollars.
Should've gave you a Snickers bar.
I believe it's seven, might be six, but I think it's seven units.
Okay, I'm gonna put twenty-five K as a budgetary number on that.
So actually, it's seven per hand, per
Seven per hand.
Plenum, yeah, okay, it's not, it's not the unit, it's the, it's the number of
Well, seven units.
Okay, well, it's not seven heating unit, this, did Rich?
They get those mini-stakes.
No, they don't.
They don't?
It's all central.
Okay.
Go walk around back at the library and count the condensers, and then they have two fresh air intakes on top of that, which is good, I mean, you're looking like you're horrified, but it's actually good, because it saves a fortune in operating, because they do, like the meeting rooms, all their system's top-notch, like the meeting room shuts down if there's no one in there.
Yeah.
Doesn't run anything, if it senses the people in there, then it kicks in and runs the blower and filters, and, I mean, it's how systems should be.
All right, so the next item is the water source land purchase, I think after our discussion, and I thought about this afterwards, Susan, is that was gonna be pulled from focus, because that was one of those gray area ones that they, they didn't really have an answer for me on, but didn't sound like
Is it, so
It has to be voted on anyways by the public, so therefore
Well, not now, since we already accepted the money, that wouldn't have to be voted on by the public, but I
If it comes out of focus, I think it does.
If it comes out of focus, yes, but I think that is the more appropriate place to be pulling the money from.
And is that moving forward?
That's a good question, I, so we, well, I had sent him a letter just basically explaining the process and what we're looking to do, and I don't know that we heard anything back, did we?
Because I think we should, we gotta
Yeah.
Have to have a warrant article for it if it's doing that.
So I will assign that one to myself, and I will contact him tomorrow.
Okay.
But I would say for the time being, that would be coming out of focus. The meeting room upgrades, again, I think this goes back to the thing that we dealt with through the, through the pandemic, is people not being able to hear anything when you're broadcasting from this room.
Audio being here.
Also, just the complete lack of any Zoom capability or anything like that here. So Dawn had contacted them.
They were supposed to send me an upgraded vest though today, they haven't, so I'll probably receive it tomorrow.
Okay. And that was the company that had bid it previously when we put it as a warrant article.
Wouldn't sound good.
The town phone system.
What are you looking at me for?
Yeah, what, what, what do you guys got going?
Well, so, uh
It was like a
You had contacted Graham regarding this last night.
Oh, that's correct, that is correct, he was gonna talk with Block Five, because he had already done
Actually, I got that proposal from Block Five, but Graham was gonna check with Kent Communication too.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around.
And Block Five was only for the fire station.
So we took five bids when we did the system downstairs?
Well, let me follow up with Graham, assume we ended up with that, and to see, I'm not sure he was encompassing the town, because none of us
I think we told him to one of the nights here, and he said
And maybe he hadn't, I just didn't
He said he would check into adding to the whole town.
Okay, I, I will check with him on that.
But yeah, that would have to go to RFP, I would guess, but
Right, but he was looking at, he was looking at, I thought it was Kent, and asking whether he should pursue the Block Five, and he said, yes, because we were looking more towards Block Five to do a phone system for the town.
Yep.
But we hadn't really done anything about it as yet.
Okay.
Okay. Do we continue on that one?
So fiber optic infrastructure, I think this stems from the discussion we're having where the server was gonna be located.
Right.
I could follow up on that and report back.
I, I think we want to put a number to it, but I, I would say, just going off what we have right now, we've already burned up like two hundred and twenty-five grand, kind of this money, so
Third, right.
I think
I, I will say Block Five's statement was, it's fine word, it's, it's not an issue.
I mean, typically if we lose power here, we close anyway.
That's, that was their point.
You know, so it's not like we'd need the computers, they only, I mean, if we were operating remotely, I don't
But you're still not gonna be using the server, you know?
I don't think there's anything we do for the amount of time we lose power, we would miss out on anything.
The only one that has an issue is Tammy with the registrations connected with the state, but she said she could go to the fire station if it was the right phone system, she'd pick up
Yeah, I think they have permission to take their computers.
She got permission that they could go to, she couldn't take the computer out of here to go somewhere else offsite to still do the transaction, she was the only person that had to be here at the town hall, because she couldn't move that computer, and she sits at the leave, I'm almost, I'm ninety percent sure she could go to the fire station, for example, and hook up in there.
I mean, it's, the system's supposed to also be if the town hall burns down, if we can all operate.
Right, but she's got a dedicated computer for the state, and that's a little bit different than what we would do with our own desktops, laptops.
Yeah, but I think the computer, as you said, she can unplug it and go somewhere else, that was the old way that, oh no, this is the only one, you can't do anything, it's she, but
I, I will check that, she's still, I think, on vacation, she should be back in two weeks, so So we want to find out if she can move that computer out of there for backup, or she could, she literally pick up her, I just want to be sure of what I'm asking her.
I, I think we need to know what her requirements are
Okay.
In a remote situation.
Okay, I got it.
And what can be done to make that
To happen?
Yes. I guess Kevin, I would say if we can find a budgetary number for that, you know, just someone
For running the fiber optic?
Well, I guess the bigger question is, what do we, I mean, do we want to just go here to the fire station, or do we want to tie in the PD and the highway bar as well?
No, PD has their own server.
Okay.
They don't tie in, it was only, and theirs is all cloud-based anyways, you know, it was, that's what I'm saying, it's
So this would just be aligned to the fire station?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so if we can get a budgetary number for that All right. Architectural plans for town offices, so I think we took the right first step, and in just putting a, a customer window up and putting, you know, keypads on all the doors, which is something we need to bring up to Cindy, our insurance company probably needs to be made aware of that, because we, we used to get dinged on that all the time, is that we didn't have secure entry protocols, as I recall, just
Yeah, most of, usually you get a deduction on your rates for insurance companies if you have that type of experience.
Right, so I, I think we will be eligible for a reduced insurance rate in that area, but
However small it might be.
Yeah, real bad hopes. But this would be basically drawing up a phased work plan on what the town hall's gonna look like for the next thirty years, and, you know, the planning board has already come to us with a request for new setup.
Well, let me ask you this, should we put in, as Kevin's improvement plan proposed forth, town for architectural drawings, I mean, I have no idea what that would cost.
Well, we've got a building filing, we could probably pull that out of it.
Okay, but do we want to put it on the CIP? So that other department would say that we are serious number one, and that it's a priorio, the townspeople would see what our CIP is, and, and see that we're looking ahead to what needs to be done to this building, because it's, it's the last of the buildings that needs to be upgraded, and it needs to be upgraded with twenty-five years or more in mind.
Well, maybe we put it in the capital improvement, but the idea is to spend the six hundred thousand dollars of this, so we're already at the money we have this year to spend, so we put it in the capital improvement for next year, so when we get the next installment, the money can come out of that.
Correct, and, but I, I think it's the right way to go, only because it informs the public also of what we have in mind.
Right.
What we hope to do.
Yes.
Preserve this building by still making it more functional for all of us, and stage notwithstanding.
So let's put in the capital improvement for twenty-twenty-two, I guess, is what I
Okay, and how much we put in there?
I would say
Thirty thousand dollars?
I was thinking more forty-five, but maybe we could find out. I was thinking forty-five, I don't know with that
Forty to fifty to get actual bidable plans drawn up.
With, if you've done plans, you're every bit of that.
Yeah.
If you're getting concepts, you're nowhere near that, so
Well, we would need concepts, just to know what, what, what the layout would look like, we have no, we get a start.
How about if we work on getting some prices, and it's, it's for capital improvements, or actually not twenty-twenty-two, I guess, put it for twenty-twenty-three is my, I must go, for twenty-twenty-three to act on it, we'll budget it for next year.
I'll take that one. I'll tell the guy that offered to do the work for the town a few years ago for nothing.
Why not, I mean, it, conceptually, you need, you need to start somewhere, because we might not like it, might want to tweak it, might want input from our staff.
There's so many thoughts on what could be done.
I, I'm betting we got a lot more room than we know we have, especially when we get rid of
Everybody keeps talking about this state being
It's going, it's going.
I think we can go down the floor level.
Yes.
Anyone that wants it can come and get it.
Well, I, I think
Is that nicely said?
This would probably be the first thing, but this would probably be the temporary offices of whoever downstairs is getting their area repurished, you know, they was, and then, well, anyway.
That's a good deal with all the handicap issues too, so
And, and there are accessibility issues that we have to tackle, you know, specifically in the bathrooms, that we don't have any, you know, so there's a lot of things here that need to be attacked, but So as far as the laptops for all inspectors or tablets, as we discussed, I think we can attach a budgetary number to this, but I don't see that happening until we have a software or an app that we're gonna be using for them, and then we select a tablet based on that.
You could probably just figure fifteen hundred a laptop, you know, how many you're gonna get.
I'd say a little bit more than that, but, because you don't want as much memory on it as you can to run some of these programs.
I don't think you need the memory, because you're not, you're not stored on the computer, you're gonna be loading up the software, which is gonna be a server.
Laptop is what you want, I think you want tablets more, because you want the easy accessory.
No, but this is what the Block Five said, what's your software, when you have your software, then you'll know whether you, you could use laptop or iPads.
And I think it's gonna be a mix of both, I think there's gonna be some
It depends, they're gonna need, for inspectors, you might in some cases need
I mean, like, my situation, I, I think a pad would be plenty to be able to go out, pull up the property file, look at existing, and tell the people something, I don't think I'm gonna be doing a tremendous amount of field input, mine will be scanned later once they submit things, where
The building inspector might need more.
The electrical and plumbing may need more, so you go on there, see what's there, type in what they've done, what they looked at, put a few pictures up.
All right, I'll take that one, and software. So the next two, the recycling center transfer station and Um, so the next two, the recycling center transfer station and. The solar at the landfill. Um. Ellie's already drawn up some press releases regarding those to form the committees.
Nice job by the panel, not good.
All right.
Short treat.
Yeah, I, they're not gonna read a lot, so I just, and I'm gonna ask Alicia at the character, that you would repeat them over the next six, eight weeks. Till we get committees formed and I'll, and I'll take it on Facebook. And as soon as I can post it on the town website, the two releases and the, people know what's going on.
I, I think the big thing with these is this is gonna end up being a warm article. More than likely, the items that come out of these and. I think we wanna hold as much of this and reserve, these are things that we can look at doing, but. Um, these are just gonna be basically pending, pending committee results. Um. So the IMC software.
We don't know what IMC means.
I don't even.
I just put police software.
Information, information management.
So if I were to say that this software makes us more able to operate remotely, would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. And then Tammy had another one for the town clerk that met the same criteria for her, so I think both of those software items. Um. Do you have my scribble sheet with you, Susan? I think I had actually numbers on there.
Yes, I just gotta find it.
Alright, so Dawn, I had you at eleven two fifty, does that sound right?
Okay.
How much did you save, though?
Eleven two fifty. And then for the clerk work software, uh, Tammy was supposed to give us the number, so we'll.
Why, why do you, the town clerk, you don't have her scanner or printer on there?
If, if you're gonna buy.
Uh, yes, oh, okay.
So that is, that is purchasable with the op funds, correct?
Yes, because. As it reads, any software that enhances your ability to work remotely.
Yep.
And so that falls into that.
Yeah, and, and we'll, and we're looking for this budget cycle for the, or next year? Actually, let's ask the simple question, we got two hundred, when's the next check come?
Uh, we.
We got half of it.
Yeah, we got half.
Oh, half, three hundred, okay.
So we have a three hundred thousand dollars, I would say. Why wait, if it's something that.
Prices.
Our department.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but when is the next check come, I guess, is, is sometime next year?
Yeah, I think that's what you said.
Yeah, I think, when do we get that, June or July?
It came this summer, summer's the summer.
Christmas in July.
Christmas in July, exactly.
Um, so. I, I think that's a worthwhile one that we would do before the year's end. Or as soon as we kinda just all agree on what we're moving forward on, I think some of these things are just things that need to happen now. Um. So. For the town clerk, the clerk's, clerk work software, we'll get a number from Tammy, the money counter. I think that goes back to a health and safety issue because. You know, there was a concern as far as transmissibility on paper money. And they're handling a lot of money in there with tax payments and, I mean, it was. It, it was five hundred, it was under five hundred dollars for a money counter and I think that's. It, it, it's just a labor saving more than anything else, but I, I think just from a safety standpoint.
And, and sanitary.
Right. Alright, so I'm gonna put Dawn as the IMC software point of contact and I'll have Tammy as the, uh, two items for the town clerk. Um, cost related to MS four permit compliance, this is another one that's kinda in the gray area.
Well, kinda, but, um, one thing down here, you've got testing, there's supposed to be pricing test kits for me. So we can do our own testing. Um, so we should have that when we have our next meeting.
So does this make the unfunded mandate from the EPA a funded mandate now, or?
Well, MS four is different, isn't it?
Yeah, cause this deals with stormwater, I mean, they specifically point out water and sewage. They don't, they didn't mention stormwater.
I don't think it counts, from what I can tell.
And I think.
Intern's a good idea though. Maybe we'll find somebody to do our testing and stuff as part of college program.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea.
But we will save a tremendous amount of money doing our own testing. And it'll score as high on the report card of, you know, things we have to do. Because what goes, what, I don't know how much you guys know about the system, but we have about. A hundred and fifty, uh, swells.
Yep.
And of that, we're supposed to test thirty, twice a year, wet and dry. And what we've been doing for testing is that we follow the clean out people around and said, yep, it's clean, yep, it's dirty. And she said if we would do some samples and say, you know, it's clean, no bacteria. And that, that really scores you a lot of points and she thought we could get a good grade get for five hundred dollars. And that it would really achieve a lot on our, all our testing and things.
Per kick or the five hundred dollar buys is how many?
A lot.
Okay.
It's, you, you buy strips as you need them, it's like testing pool, same type of basic thing, but that's for more bacteria.
Would that be something the school might be interested in?
Maybe you could ask.
Like an intern who's a senior in high school and. Has a science.
I, I thought, weren't we thinking intern from UNH, I thought, no, I, I. I think we're talking UNH. Someone in soil science or.
Some kind of.
Depends on the person. No pun, twenty-year-olds are much less responsible than seventeen-year-old.
Well, I mean, I'll talk to them about that and see what kinda thoughts, if they've done that anywhere.
Alright. Uh, so for the town clerk, the, the two other things they requested was a folding machine and a printer. Um. We are gonna have, it looks like some remaining funds in the technology upgrade area, I think.
I see, almost eight thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, so her new printer was six thousand two hundred and four.
A folding machine is not that expensive, I, I wanna guess.
The folding machine, she said was three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
For a folding machine?
I, I questioned the need for that. And I'll tell you why, because when they get those tax bills out last week, they brought everybody in for. Several hours and they're done.
I, I.
I know it's a pain, but it's a one.
I get it, I, 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 you know, I think. For the, that cost of a what, you know, I, what's the life of it, let's, let's say.
Okay, don't, don't go any further, I, I think we should ask Tammy to look at a used one number one. And I bet someone like Alternative Sales, even though they do kitchen equipment, this is used office equipment.
Well, and there is where I would say that doesn't qualify for.
It does not.
This is a cost of doing business type of thing, so I think the printer is, we use the end of year. Money that we have to purchase the printer and then go with the plan of the old printer going to the museum.
And neither one of these qualified.
Correct, I mean, this is clean paper they handle, it's not like a money counter that's.
Right.
Right.
You know, dirty paper.
Yeah, so I, I, you know.
I'll talk to her about the folding, I, I, I used to have one and there was, I, no way I haven't paid. More than a couple hundred bucks for it, I'm telling you right now. But it was used, it was old, but it served a purpose, it was a trifold.
That's a wrong with old.
I, I had, I totally agree. I totally agree, I'll, I'll follow up on the, on the folding machine.
I would check some of your connections for money counter.
What, money counter?
No, I'm serious. I'm making a call.
Might have some white powder on it.
I'm making a call to the DPA guy that said they have a, like thirty-four.
I'll check, I'll check my Boston connection for.
He told me they had thirty-four in Boston office. And that they can't sell them until after the court case and he was gonna check and see how long they were.
That's where the accountants get them.
Every good drug dealer's got one.
Even the bad ones. We're also going to Boston.
Those will be hard to use.
And there might be some folding machines, maybe.
It really goes under office equipment, I would totally agree with you there.
We have two places we're going to in the next, within the next month.
Alright, so we get the printer we can buy with end of year funds. We're gonna hold on to the folding machine, see if he can come with one, or you get a thing and then we're gonna, we'll see in the same thing with money counter, the same thing. But we already said money counter qualified, so if we needed to, we, we could buy that anytime.
Yeah, but if we can find one, even better. Um. So again, I. I wanna address the needs of our department heads here and try and get these things taken care of and if it's end of year, let's. Apply those funds to these things so we can alleviate some budget concerns for next year.
I already agree.
Um, so the other one that Rich brought up in the department head meeting was just the, uh. We had started on the process for Circuit Drive and Babs Scott Lane, getting them paved. Just because of the manpower requirements, but don't think that would qualify for ARPA, ARPA funds.
I thought it said any indoor structure type work, like roads, I think it does qualify, if I remember reading that right.
Investment infrastructure, water and sewer. Uh, or broadband. On my shortlist here, I didn't have anything about roads.
Okay. Um, what I'll do is I'll get with Rich and find out, cause I, I think it. Where we left it was there were some holdouts on the street who did not want to. Basically seed up the land so that we could pave it properly. Um, so I can work with Rich and Sumner just to kinda get an idea of what that process will cost us.
One thing I know Rich said was that it should be a several year process to take the trees down one year. You know, degrade it, get it, let it sit for a while so it packs good and so.
Yeah, and maybe that's something we, we put on the CIP and it's a, it's an ongoing process to get us there, but I think.
No, it doesn't qualify for funds.
But regardless, I think we need to just get it, budgetary ideas on, I mean, let's get some traction on these things and get them done. Cause I mean, his point was they're wasting so much time grading that road and just doing all this to keep it in usable condition, so.
And we did have a, you know, a letter from all the one. And it's all but two maybe people on those roads that wanted it paved. There were two people that didn't want it out of all the people down there.
Yep, and.
If something comes up that doesn't fall under the obvious categories, there is the revenue loss. And they say eligibility extended to the provision of most government services because. Using the tool they gave us, we have more revenue loss than the whole amount they gave us, so. That extends some of the usage, I think.
And I, I agree with that to a point, I think. I, I mean, it's kind of a joke, but the reality is it was, it's given to us for a purpose, you know, and. Shame on us if that was the intent that we're giving the money for and then say, there's another pandemic, we've gotta lock down the town hall, we wasted the money on a road.
And to be honest, this building is the white elephant that needs a lot of work. That would, all of it would qualify for in this building. So, I mean, it, you know, the acoustical tiles, we're looking at thirty-five plus thousand, I believe. And then that's just the acoustical tile, that doesn't add any new speakers or audio visual or anything.
Right.
So.
Yeah, when we first started out talking about this, we were gonna do digitizing this room and computer upgrades and we thought that was gonna end us.
Yeah.
So we're getting further than we originally thought.
So I, I agree with you though, one hundred percent. It, it's on our list, let's, let's put it in the CIP. You know, we're already putting CIP architectural for space needs in this building, let's put, um. Year one, money to remove trees on Cirque and Babs Scott and get all the right away. And then the next year, we could pave it.
Or we can just. If it has to become a budgetary thing, you know, however it needs to work, but I think. Let's figure out how we're gonna get there.
Right. Yep.
And Dawn, bad news. The tasers and vests do not qualify. So that will have to be under the standard budgetary process.
But then we, you were talking about possibly taking at least a taser out of the police detail fund, right?
Yeah.
So it moves that.
That's the big, that's the big, uh.
I mean, you need it, the vest, is there any way to take the vest out too, or no?
Well, let's see what we have with year-end funds too, maybe get some of them out of there.
I mean, that, the vests aren't that overly expensive, as you can see in the budget.
We put, was it eleven thousand for, that's, but that's outfit in what, fourteen, I'm guessing?
So. The other item, we had an auction this weekend, I know, good props to have, we got money rating from heaven here. Um. I mean, we had close to, or, I mean, it was thirty thousand dollars, the town is set to receive.
Yep.
For the sale of that land. And I don't think we specifically designated where that's going, I mean, obviously it's going in the general fund.
Well, it's unanticipated revenue is what it really is.
Yeah.
Period, it goes into the general fund, that's kind of the end of it, it's like no different, any. Tammy, we projected she was gonna take in registrations of, you know, whatever, two hundred thousand. If she comes in at two hundred fifty thousand, we don't do anything with that fifty thousand, it just kinda goes to the general fund.
Well, not all that money is free and clear because we surveyed one of the properties, we put some money into that to do that.
Yeah, but it's.
Dominantly, it'd probably get.
Fifty and hundred, I think we spent or something.
Yeah, at least, yeah. Mr. Zilch.
Question is, can we spend the money, it sounds like the answer is no.
Well, I, I, we could always spend the money, I guess, if we wanted to, but I don't know if it's just the sake of. You know, we're spending the ARPA fund and I think we're okay right now, let's leave it in the general fund, it's always gonna be there. And I don't wanna be the kid with the, you know, with the, I got a pocket full of change, I gotta spend it all, either.
No, non-law, I, I guess. You know, this was a test run. Well, let's, I'm skipping ahead on the agenda, so. Alright. We got any questions on where we're at on this, does everybody feel like we've kind of addressed everybody's concerns?
I think that's a good way to handle it and. We have room to grow.
So I think that will more than speak for all of that money, but. That's where we are. Appointments, public comment, committee liaison reports.
Okay, um, historic district committee met, commission met last week, reviewed the first draft of plans from Mr. Chinberg. And, uh, there were some concerns about the height of the. He's just, he's proposing to tear down the science building because he needs to make at least seventy apartments to make it a viable development. To recruit some of his class in the seminary building, he's looking at fifteen apartments in the seminary and another sixty to seventy in the. Old, what, what was the old science building footprint? Um, it was four story, more like two and a half, it was about fifty feet tall. Uh, some of the commission members were not comfortable with that being four stories, they were more comfortable with three. And also talked about splitting up the size so it wasn't so large, but maybe doing a wing. He was very receptive to that, was gonna come back with another set of drawings for us on the fifteenth. That incorporates some of the suggestions made by the commission members. Uh, he's closing the end of December, I think the thirtieth.
Thirteenth.
Of the school, with the school district, so he's hoping that, um, with these revisions, he'll be able to pass muster with the HDC and, and forward on the project.
We do have a height requirement on buildings.
I know, and it's thirty-five feet, this would have been fifty as it is now. We looked it up, we looked it up right then and there, so, yeah, we did discuss it.
Probably not.
Don't look so quizzical, we have, we had some experts on the HDC there, so just trust me on that.
Can I ask, so let me ask a stupid question, if you did put it four stories, it still matches the height of the seminary building.
It's less than, it's lower than the height of the seminary, it's really.
Well, not the top peak, but the.
It's lower than the height of the seminary.
Okay.
You know, the top peak, if you looked at those drawings. And Mr. Chinberg said it was really like two and a half stories the way it was configured. I, again, just go on what he was told us.
No, man.
And he said it was above between fifty or fifty-five feet as presented. Our. Coverage is thirty-five feet, it's standard. So he was looking, looking at taking one floor off, it's. So he was looking, looking at taking one floor off and adding the building and wait, put a wing on it so that it's not as one big piece. Either cutting it to two or making it all shaped.
My question would be, if we're gonna put apartments, whether they be four stories or the, the old main building, is the fire chief involved in the process as well?
He, he saw the drawings, yes he did. The seminary building has, would have fifteen units in there, that's it.
But how about for reaching for, like, are we gonna have to buy some ladder truck or something to reach?
I, I, I already talked with, with, uh, at this point, no, at this point. Cause Graham also mentioned that the fire codes today are different. You're gonna have to spread the systems that are gonna be throughout the property, it's not quite the same. Will, will, we need what he said we may, but not necessarily right away. So he did say that. And he did look at it. So that's what's happened with the HDC. Um, I got a, uh, an email from Graham asking if, one of his, uh, employees has asked to carry over some vacation time, forty-eight hours. And Graham said six months and I said, if you're lucky, if you get sixty days to carry it over. Cause we, we have a policy, right, that we cannot carry, but we have someone that's asked for it, for forty-eight hours to be carried over. I would say, let's do it, but within, it must be used within the first six weeks, if you would be honest with me. Cause you, you get into a habit of carrying over and it gets out of control. And given the constraints of the department, the filling in time, I, I'd like us to argue that request, but not for six months.
I, I would agree with that.
Forty-five days or something like that.
So does that mean every employee that has vacation time can carry it over forty-five days?
No, it means that this one can, as a special exception.
There, there is a, a form that is supposed to sign for carry.
We have his signature.
Okay.
He said that a letter of a signature attached. Got that here.
Okay, Dawn?
Uh, what do we have for you? Fire station today, you know, we moved the cistern, cistern tank, you know, we moved it away from the building. It's too close to the foundation, they felt the size of the tank, too close to the foundation, so they moved it back. They actually set that in place today, a big tank. And, uh, station's moving right along, doing a great job on it.
Go. Um, budget committee had a marathon session on Sunday. Um, and just to give you a flavor of the meeting, they are very concerned with, um, the ten percent increase that is put forward. I reminded them that this is the department heads more or less wish list or whatever, you know, we'll just talk at decision day. But they were concerned with that, they had a lot of concerns about ARPA funds and everything else. I reiterated to them that, um, there's only certain qualifications for it, this'll help them. Um, knowing that there's things we're doing, but I said, we, it's, it doesn't change the way we do business. You can't like just take everyday stuff out of that money. So I, I did tell them that. Um, what I handed out is a little packet from Block Five. The top cover sheet is when we, when Block Five came in and evaluated the town buildings, they gave us a three-year plan. Uh, we did the twenty twenty-one stuff, this is the twenty twenty-two projects that they have listed here. Um, which I would suggest we budget for, uh, I, I'm not sure what Cindy did put or didn't put. The next pages that follow, the, um, museum committee, um, explained to Block Five what they do over there. So Block Five, this is don't, you know, what they did was they took what they do and said, this is what you need, okay? Um, which is quite extensive, it's roughly twenty thousand dollars worth of IT work.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so anyways, um, so they put that, they came to the budget committee and they said, this is what we need. And I said, no, that's what you want, I'm like, no, we need this. Um, so there's a lot of questions about what they do over there and how they do it. Um, and I had a very quick conversation with Block Five. Um, one of the things is like, we already talked about their main computer is dying. But what they're looking to do is replace that and that would be able to store and do a lot of things, but then they would want a slave computer that the patrons could look at. Um, and that doesn't even touch all the switches, the IT support, the fight walls, the servers and everything else. That's what you see here, Block Five only went off of, you know, they called them, said, this is what we do, what do you, and so they gave them this list. Um, but they're, um, let's just say between, Rich already met with them and the way they presented, they feel this is an absolute need, they, no disrespect to them. They, but they perform a vital task for the town and they need twenty thousand dollars for IT work. Um, the budget committee was not, they were taken in shock by it because you took a budget that was five thousand dollars and went to twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, they suggested you might wanna do some sort of fundraising or put it as a warrant article. Um, but I felt bad, the lady left last night feeling that this is an absolute need and why would we not do this?
So, switch to that question.
Well, I already answered that earlier.
No, just leave it. So then, the only other thing is, um, it's on my to-do list, but, um, shame on me, I should have known. I did go to the county to get their vacation policy and, um, they earned time, they don't have vacation, so that kind of wiped it out. Um, I called the state on the day before Veterans Day and they didn't call me back till Friday and I was at work and I couldn't take the call, she didn't even leave me a message. I was quite clear what I was looking for, so I gotta call the state back. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call some local towns and see what they do to get that information. Other than that, I thank everyone for being here for the, um, auction sale, I couldn't be here for that, but I will be here Friday. Uh, but anyways, it sounded like that went very well.
Okay. Um, before we finish up, I did, and do I get a motion to regarding that request for carrying over that forty-eight hours or do we do that and do business or no business?
I think that's, we could just do that, wouldn't they submit that on a piece of paper and sign it?
I, I have a piece of paper with this.
Yeah, we would just sign it, just like anything else we sign, right? We don't vote on vacation, someone's doing vacation, right? We just sign it?
Yes, but we're doing something against policy.
No, the policy states they can do it.
I thought the policy says they can do it.
I thought they could with our approval.
Well, then they could do anything with our approval.
Okay, oh.
Be very honest with you, we, we can't make an exception to our policy, our policy is not to carry over vacation.
Okay, so let's make a, a motion.
Uh, I'm asking my colleagues to approve this for forty-five days. That you use it within forty-five days.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion in second, further discussion.
Yes, I don't know how we can do it for one person and not allow everybody to do it.
And I agree with you there, the only, the reason why I think it's worthy of an exception is that it's a firefighter move, had trouble filling in schedules. Just saying.
So allowing them to keep their vacation off that?
Well, I don't, I don't think he should be out for the month of December to use up all his vacation, whatever it is, it's not. He leaves too much down to the end of the year anyways, this particular individual.
I mean, I don't let part of it carry it over, I just don't think it's being limited to that person. That's my issue, that we're singling out one person. I don't have a problem with it, last year we allowed people to carry over vacation because they weren't able to go anywhere.
Well, yes, last year was different.
I can see us saying kind of the same thing. And allow any employee to carry over for X number of days, but.
Okay.
That's, that's.
My job is to break it forward, if my, if you guys.
You're just raising a point.
Yeah, he is raising a good point, but I don't disagree with you, I understand that.
Is, is that even gonna help the person if we make it for forty-five days? I don't know that that's gonna really change any situation, so instead of taking December off, they're gonna take January off?
It helps the fight apartment spread that overtime over two years versus.
It's forty-eight hours, it's not, I, I think it's.
They decided here to spread it out.
And you can't.
I think we have to look at each case individually.
So, why don't, can we speak about this in non-public since we'll be talking about a specific employee?
Yes.
This could be a personnel matter that we'd have to discuss.
It should be.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay, I mean, I'm assuming there's some extraneous circumstances here, right?
I don't think so, I think it's permanent time. To some extent, and I think part of it is that they've been, been shorthanded, this individual jumps in and does it. That, and therefore doesn't take some of the vacation time he should. And I know he's gonna be off for two or three weeks this month and in December anyway. So instead of having four weeks, it's three weeks.
I, I think there is some circumstances that I would like to discuss.
Okay, then, that, and I'm good with that too, I just.
Sorry, I withdraw my second to your motion if you do.
What's that?
I withdraw my.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Rich, you got any?
No.
Uh, old business, we've already discussed the scanning and digitization proposals. Uh, the other thing is the revised employee evaluation forms.
I thought it looked pretty good.
Yep.
Did you change anything or it's the same one?
It's not the same one.
No, it's the one that was the department head ones, right?
We use, we incorporate the department head one as one. So there won't be a separate evaluation for the department head.
Yep.
Number one. And, and we changed the rating, exceeds expectation, I mean, just like the department head. We took out that stuff about appearance and clothing and all that crap. But that was not for that.
I guess the only item I would bring up, especially if it's gonna pertain to department heads as well, is just, I didn't see an area to do a write-up on the employee at the end.
I thought there was, where is this?
There's employee comments at the end.
Results from prior year, objectives and.
That's the last page. Results from previous prior year, objectives for coming year, employee comments.
Okay, but typically, I would do a write-up on an employee, when I do an evaluation of someone, I state, you know, this year you've done X, Y and Z. You put that you did.
I would just allow a little more space there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I think there needs to be, you know, you know, there is some
When employees.
Space for comments, but I think, you know, an overall.
Okay.
That, that would be my only addition.
Can we approve it with that exception?
Are you okay with it?
I'm okay.
Putting a couple of extra lines on there.
Cause we have the, what I would do is employee comment and then allow for employer comment. A reviewer.
We're putting reviewer comment, employee comment, that's where they can say, you're being a thing, you're not being fair.
Okay, we want that before.
That, can we quote that one?
Okay, we can do that. I move that we adopt the evaluation form with.
I think we should put a jar out here, anytime.
I'll put a jar out there for you.
You were saying?
I move that we, uh, fully propose an employee evaluation form with the addition of a reviewer comment prior to the employee comment.
Well, second. Okay, motion in second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. New business, capital improvement plan, I think we covered that pretty well.
Yeah.
Um, board business. So the tax rate was set, uh, the bills should have gone out.
Everybody's got their real book on it.
We have, um, back to the ARPA thing, we were not allowed to use this money to pay down the tax rate. But I do think that board took that into consideration, that we did have this money to offset other things and we went kind of beyond the DRA guidance of what we should have for retained funds. And so we returned as much as we were comfortable with, but certainly less, or it was more, we did not retain as much as DRA recommends. I think that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Worthwhile recap. Um, despite a fire station being built and numerous other things, the tax rate went up very, very, very.
Forty cents a thousand.
Forty cents a thousand, that's pretty good.
It went up forty cents a thousand. Um, that was with everything thrown in there and a fire station, all those things, so I think that was the best we could do with what we had and I think the board did a good job on that.
I'll say several people came to the window today with their tax bills and I didn't have anybody complaining about the rate. We had questions about assessed value that we're addressing, that's normal, but we get those every year.
Yep.
Yeah. I didn't get any calls either about the tax rate.
And again, we, you know, the town assessor is available, if you have questions on your rate, they're, they're here to answer those questions or review them with you, so encourage anybody who has questions to do so.
On, on the assessed value?
On the assessed value. Uh, on the tax rate, you can certainly call us and, and if you would like, one of us can give you a call back and let you know where we came from. Susan can field your questions and directly to one of us. Um, again, uh, we sold four parcels to a butters in the Great Pond Park. Um, all of the parcels sold, all of them are sold to a butters, they are non-buildable lots. And were sold as, as such, and they'll be closing in the coming weeks. Uh, as I said earlier, the final numbers, I don't know where they ended up, but it was approximately thirty thousand dollars that the town netted. Gross, I guess, and then we have some expenses with that, like all and all, I think it worked out for everybody.
Uh, if I could just point out, if anyone knows of land next to theirs that the town owns and is willing to, we could look at the next time. I think we should do it at yearly event, how did you feel November worked?
Uh, no, we, we, I thought we already established a date. It takes, did we not establish a date, or we talked about establishing an annual date?
Right.
And if they want, someone wants to buy, buy a piece of property to add to theirs, that they had to submit their request by a certain date.
I, I think November's good though because like sports are over and it's gonna be a Saturday.
Oh, for the bit, but, but we have to have a submitted date if anybody's.
Yeah, I was saying it should be submitted by May or something so that we could have looked at it and do all that stuff.
Now, the, I'll say this, this was kind of a test run for us. We did four properties, we got what we wanted to out of them, a little more on one. I think the process worked great, the auctioneers even had a little question about the process and they thought it worked great, I talked to them again today. We have one issue and that's the follow-up after it's sold. Cause we told them to call Sumner and Sumner's answer to them was, we don't close, do closings on auctioned properties. So we gave them information that was not right at the situation, but Sumner's gonna write the deeds, let them record the deeds, he's not gonna record it. Now the thing, buyers were trying to do, which we need to think about in the future, is most of them, it's two people that bought the property and they were splitting it. And they wanna split it for the closing. Which we gotta work out either to say, no, that's not our responsibility, or allow a little more time for closing or something. Because that means the surveyor going in, drawing it up.
Not doing that.
So I think we avoid that, but we need to make that clear in the next round of auctions, that we're gonna close on that property with two names on it or however they do it. And be done with it and then they can do what they want to do. They were trying to be at the expense of two closings.
So this is where I would say lessons learned, but this is where we are limited to a butters only. If they wanna outbid each other, that's their prerogative, or they work it out beforehand.
Well, that's what they did, so they worked it out beforehand, but then they wanted to put that on paper when.
Well, no, that doesn't.
Right.
Doesn't work that way. We're one seller, we're selling a piece of property.
And we're trying to sell at the minimum price we can.
Right, we were trying to.
If we wanted to add a couple thousand, we could let them do that, but then it may be one person buying it, so why add the cost?
Well, there was a bid, it was two guys of the.
One property.
One property.
Right, it'd sell three hundred dollars or something.
Yeah, went from six to sixty-four or seven, or seven to seventy-four.
Which is funny, cause that person was set, thought that we overpriced it and then he goes and racks up for the next guy.
Yeah, what was that?
Carton of Lee, that's the one I can think of right off the top of my head.
But that guy's.
Carton of Lee, when you and I went there three times and then he just tore down the barn and went. So that's my, that's my vote for next year.
So, so yeah, November, but do we. So, so, yeah, November, but do we, did we, I don't remember establishing something, so do we say we gotta close, people have to put a request by May thirty-first?
We need a policy on it, is basically what it was then, and I would say by August first, so that you're gonna have, second Saturday in November be the auction date.
I think that's kind of close, I think we need a lawyer to have the date, so I think we sort of, you have to be flexible with it. What happened last night, we had to have one of them surveyed, then you're gonna have the deeds done.
Well, we learned we don't have to survey them.
Right, exactly, that's the point.
So, we, that was part of the learning curve is we don't have to...
I think we go the end of the June, end of June, that gives us plenty of time to get it everything checked and ready.
To find out if we wanna sell it or, you know, get opinions and all that stuff, yeah.
And I do agree with Phil that this was a good time, you know, because...
Yeah, the auction, yeah, there's, there's nothing else really going on or competing for it.
And the auctioneer gets a little slower that time of year and everything.
So, Susan, could you just write up what we just stated as a policy? That, you know, anyone interested in, um, any butters looking to purchase town land has to get a request in?
June fifteenth is the deadline. Does that work?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we already made a policy.
June fifteen. Yeah, and we, we're selling, are we gonna keep it that way, sell into a butters only?
Right now...
Non-conformant, non-conformant.
And you're saying we're gonna let... What, one of the departments review it? Yeah, conservation has to review any property that you sell.
Yeah, and that's the policy, so Susan's gonna pull up a copy of the policy, add a date, we're gonna review it and then...
That's gonna take thirty days.
And take at least thirty...
I think when we evaluate the property, we decide if it's a butters only at that time.
Yeah, okay.
Because there may be someone...
You may have a larger policy.
Yeah.
Well, and if, and if it's not a butters, then you have to open it up, it's a different type of auction.
Yeah.
I think. But it, you, Great Pond is different because...
Great Pond is different.
Maybe this is policy for non-conforming lots?
Yeah, I, I think in a non-performing lots, it's right, that one on carton, that, that was a non-performing loss, so that would have...
Non-conforming lots, and it's our way to get rid of it. If we come across one, we could look at the property and then we could throw it in there and then that's a full-on bid.
I mean, I, I guess my point is what if we took, uh... Chief Briggs' house, just to, so I don't...
Again?
Yeah, if we took his house, we don't wanna say that's for butters only.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's, it's a building lot, no...
Non-conforming lots would be a butters only.
We get original development, we get odds and ends all over...
You better bring a lot of guns if you're gonna take the Briggs property. So, I think Annabelle has a shotgun.
I was trying to think of somebody that wouldn't take me serious, so...
I thought I was serious.
He gave you a dirty lock, I saw.
Alright, uh, so, public comment number two, uh, correspondence and application of my purchase orders. We've got an intent to cut on Backroom.
Is that where you still hang out in high school?
I'll be. And...
Just a note on signing stuff, because everybody really needs to try to sign stuff at these meetings because sometimes the next two theaters, like, one's gonna draw things, two on sound.
It's getting a bit... I don't think they have to take, so one thing I need to... Because I think, I think you have your applications, right?
It's gonna be a mistake for the...
I'm sure it's like...
Okay, I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
So moved, public and non-public?
Sure. Okay, motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay.
Um... How about if we take a look when we do go to encumber funds? Seeing we do have this list of projects for Block Five, it's really not, it's pretty short money. Maybe we look at encumbering the funds for, to do it next year? On these?
We could, but not on any of those attached sheets.
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying this front card, we could, and, and then we'll look at this five on here, definitely four. And evaluate the, what the immediate needs of one is, you know, but other words, these were already scheduled.
Yes. I think that would be a good idea. Um, Susan and I discussed when the encumbering funds meeting will be.
Uh, we've landed on the thirtieth, you and I talked about the thirty...
Of December?
No, uh, yes, we talked about the thirty-first. Um, I talked to Cindy to make sure she was free, she said the thirtieth is better because of the timeframe that she needs.
And that'll be a posted meeting, not a...
That'll be posted way ahead of time.
So, that's Thursday, the thirtieth?
Yeah, at noon.
Yes.
So, that's where this top sheet goes.
Okay, um, so we have a legal matter to discuss, a non-public, a personnel matter. Dawn, I see we have a increase requested?
I think that's a contract, so that's probably being non-public too.
Yes. Okay, that's all I got, anybody else got anything from a public session?
I have one other thing for non-public.
What does it fall under?
Uh... Right. I don't know. One falls under legal. Seventy-nine eighty, negotiation contract.
Okay.
I do say a word.
Okay, uh, that will conclude, oh, actually, I'll entertain a motion to go into a non-public session.
So, first?
Second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That will conclude the public portion of this evening's meeting, thank you very much for joining us.